Thank you.
Thank you.
Your testimony.
Is it Saliva?
It's K. Oh, okay.
There's damage.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Saliva. Please excuse my voice today. I have a cold. But this issue is too important to me to stay home today. I'm seventeen, six months shy of being eighteen and a future voter. And so I wanted to come here today and make my voice heard. Our nation and government are built upon and according to our Constitution, written by we, the people, as a collective and for us, the people. Therefore, as people of this country, we hold the ability to decide what is an infringement of our rights. And I feel that to need a permit to conceal carry a firearm is an infringement of our rights. To require a permit isn't going to make things safer, but only puts the rights and the safety of law-abiding citizens in jeopardy. As to the public safety issue, forcing people to be trained hasn't stopped accidents from happening. Whether it's on hold to permit or not, they still have been known to have accidents. And parents do not stop them, nor ensure the less likeliness of it. I myself have never been officially trained, yet I know good safety very well. I grew up with guns in my home, and I know how to handle and fire a weapon safely. I am very capable of a firearm, and I learned that from my parents, not from a professional trainer. Requiring permits inhibits good citizens from protecting themselves and others and impedes on their rights. As Benjamin Franklin said, "They that can give up essential liberty for temporary security deserve neither." I feel that as good citizens, we have the right, under our Constitution, to conceal carry a firearm if we so choose without the expense and hassle of needing a permit. And I would like one last point to point out. That history has shown that almost every tyrannical government that has come into power and that had ultimately put their people into gross bondage has started by disarming them. And has started disarming them by putting more and more restrictions on their guns. That's why I would like to ask you respectfully to please take this unnecessary restriction off of us good citizens and vote yes on LD 652.
Thank you. Is it Michael Wickett from Bradley? Number forty-nine? Number fifty, Melissa. Number fifty-one. Melissa. And number fifty-two?
I'm Zoe Menzulo. Sorry, my voice is bad as my daughters. And I'm sorry, but my testimony isn't anywhere near as great as my two daughters' testimony. It's more of a personal testimony of what I've gone through. That's okay.
Yes.
So I did make a six-hour round trip to be here because this is very important to me. And one of the main reasons it is important to me is that I used to have a permit to conceal carry. And back then, I trusted our government. But recently, there's been a lot of gun grabbing, and I really feel uncomfortable with our government now in Washington. You guys, you are. You guys are good. But I'm uncomfortable, and I don't feel like I trust them so much. And I'm afraid that with the restrictions they're trying to place on guns, they may come for lists of registered gun owners or permit holders and try and come and take our guns. So I stopped getting a permit. Now, I used to carry a little .22 in my purse. I have nine children. I was a single mom for a long time, never on welfare. You can probably cover that. But I was a single mom. And just knowing that I was the main protection of my children, that I had that little gun tucked in my purse, meant the world to me. Now, I won't get a permit because I don't want them knocking on my door for my guns. I don't want them to know that I have guns. So now, I'm stuck in a vulnerable position. I can either A, become a criminal and tuck one in my purse anyway, or B, leave my family vulnerable, or C, carry one on my hip and walk into a bank and get kicked out, or have people just think that's a very aggressive kind of thing. Most people are not really comfortable when you walk into a supermarket with a gun on your hip. So my view in this is that for me, it's really made me vulnerable. I can choose between being vulnerable or criminal. And I think we may have lost citizens vulnerable by insisting on a permit to carry. And for one, I've never been arrested. I've never shot anybody. I've never pulled my gun out in an argument. I've never done anything illegal. Maybe speed took a curve there, but I've never done anything that makes me a risk for carrying a gun. So to have a concealed weapon as a good citizen who's... My daughter is a police sergeant, you know, so I raised a cop. And if I thought that this permit requirement made our police force safer, I'd be all for it because I think my daughter would be safer. Or if it made citizens safer, I'd be all for it. But I think it doesn't. I think it makes good citizens vulnerable and potentially criminals. And criminals are still going to carry concealed, whether they have a permit or not. So that's my testimony.
Thank you. Thank you. Julia is next.
Good afternoon, Senator Rosen. Representative Fowler, members of the committee. I am an old leader. I live in the house that I grew up in, and that house does have guns in it, so I understand the issue of our responsibility or membership. I'd like to speak briefly to LD 652. I think you've heard arguments across the board, you know, even with Franklin. What I would like you to know is that LDB does support the establishment of an organization efficient system to provide concealed weapons permits to people who qualify for those permits as one protective factor of victims of violence in the community at large. Most victims are not comfortable using firearms against someone they loved and so want to let it control their lives. So seeing as protective response to all victims is not a natural one. Some victims do, in fact, use firearms in that way to respect their victims. But what I really want to speak to is LD 600, which is an act to conform Maine, Oregon, and Wisconsin to the possession of firearms with federal law. Advocates and victims of violence reflect the statewide diversity in their positions in firearms. Some advocates are strongly opposed to firearms remaining in the hands of domestic violence offenders. When we have a split like that, I feel like it's my responsibility to be able to share both sides of that discussion with you. The 2012-2014 report in the Maine domestic violence conference of review noted that twelve of the twenty-one murderers, or fifty-seven percent, used a gun to murder. And national research indicates that having a firearm present dramatically raises the number of people who will be killed. This group of thinkers concurs with the U.S. Supreme Court in their statement in the Catholic case, quote, "All too often, the only difference between a battered woman and a dead woman is the presence of a gun." From this perspective of this group, a statute change to increase prohibition for firearms is clearly indicative and provides a protective factor. However, there is a second and large group of folks in our movement who take a more nuanced position. They recognize a statistical link between homicides and the presence of firearms, and they note while high-risk offenders may be more likely to use firearms, most offenders do not demonstrate a risk or a tendency to assume assault. They point out that over four thousand domestic violence assaults are reported each year in Maine, forty percent of all the reported assaults, and most of those assaults do not involve a firearm. They note that risk assessment, including a link to firearms as one factor, is a better lens to view this group. They also asked about the validity of the protective factor in the actual homicides, noting from the same report that only four of the twenty-one murderers had a dispute with a DVA arrest that would have prohibited them from having a firearm. Most of the homicides would have provided no additional protective factor for prohibition on acquiring firearms. They point out that Maine is a rural state with very different use of firearms than urban neighborhoods, and that prohibition has a different impact on the damage. I'm out of my time. I thank you for your consideration of these issues and bringing them up here. Thank you.
Senator Rosen. Steve Penburn.
Hello. I'm from Ludbrook, way up in the sticks.
Well, I'm from Oakfield.
Well, I'm kind of looked upon in our neighborhood as the neighborhood grandpa. I've taught one pile of kids how to handle firearms. Most of the neighborhood, the parents around there send their kids up to me to teach firearms safety. I did it in the service. It's part of my job. So I can't see why we need all these rules about having to take a firearm safety course to get a license to carry a handgun. Most of the people may already know how to use a firearm. Most of the parents taught their children. I have. All the people I know out there have. And if they haven't, they want to get a firearm, most of them, they go to the local gun club and have somebody there show them how to safely use a firearm. It doesn't cost them anything. They don't have to find somebody who can give them an official course so they can get a concealed carry permit. There's a lot of women in this country that I would wish that they could just run down and buy a gun and put it in their purse, but they can't because it's concealed carry. In order to do that, according to the state, you have to go and jump through all the hoops. Go take the course, apply, wait for it to come back, so they don't dare carry a loaded gun around them. They could get arrested, and here they've got a order against somebody to keep them from getting near them, and they don't dare carry a firearm because they could get arrested for having a concealed gun. I think it's ridiculous. The only way around it is go for 652 and pass. And also, on the reciprocity thing, Maine recognizes very few other states have concealed carry permits. They should be recognized in all of them. Then other states would start recognizing ours because very few states want to recognize our concealed carry permits. That's about all I can say. Oh, and the thing about sales of private that should stay private, I shouldn't have to make a report to some federal agency if I sell a gun to my neighbor. It should be my business, nobody else's. And like the ladies who had me said here, the less the government knows about what I've got for firearms, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Shane Valanger?
Yes. So I have testimony prepared for everyone to read, so I'm not really going to go off that. I'm going to talk a little bit about what Chief Sauschuk and Chief Gugan said. So Chief Gugan said that when you're pulled over at traffic stop, you are legally obligated to tell the officer that you're carrying. That is false. And if you don't believe me, no problem, ask the state police in the work segment. Also, the denials. I am one of the denials. I am a military police officer in the United States Army. I'm a thirty-one echo. I was denied my right to carry a firearm in Maine while holding a valid Arizona and Pennsylvania permit to carry a firearm. A right delayed is a right denied. What was the denial for? It was because I had two active driver's licenses. When I moved back from Arizona and came to Maine, I got my Maine driver's license, just like you're supposed to, right? And I was following the law, doing my due diligence, even though I didn't want to pay the excise tax on my car. I still did it. And they used that as a reason to deny me my permit. So when they say that they denied thirteen people, they're not saying that they denied thirteen convicted felons. They're saying that they denied thirteen people like me because the felon isn't going to get the permit. I'm as law-abiding as they come. I have the same or more training than most of your local law enforcement, yet they still saw me as unfit to carry a firearm in my daily life to protect myself and my family. I would also like to point out that Chief Sauschuk and Chief Gugan are board members for the Maine Citizens Against Handgun Violence. So who knows how much they're getting paid to come here and testify against LD 652 on top of what they're getting paid by their local government, wherever their salary is. So that in and of itself is pretty eye-opening because it really shows that are they really testifying because of public safety, or are they testifying because that's what's going to help their wallet? Also, I'm a board member for the Gun Owners of Maine. As Todd said, we've got about five thousand grassroots members, and many of them are here today. There are actually a lot more here, but they have to leave because it's getting so late. And the last thing that I want to say is that I lived in Arizona, and it is a constitutional carry state. In Arizona, there's not blood in the streets. No one's having firefight. People there carry. People there get more training because it's not mandated by the government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. George from New Lawson.
I very appreciate it. I'll read it. We all took an oath to uphold the Constitution's name in the United States of America. Of all the bills designated for public hearing today, only one, LD 652, is close to being constitutional. All the rest do not pass the constitutional test. When I testified in 2010 on constitutional carry, Sanders asked it questioned whether the law that created concealed permits in Maine in 1917 had any merit. Just because a law has been on the books for ninety-eight years does not make it constitutional. Among U.S. states, Alaska, Arizona, Arkansas, Kansas, Vermont, and Wyoming allow residents to carry a concealed firearm without a permit. These states also allow open carry of a handgun without a permit. Vermont does not have any provision for issue of concealed carry licenses, as none has ever been necessary. Most important, it is not the responsibility of the state to take care of me. It is my responsibility to take care of myself and my family in all situations, be it personal safety or natural disaster. We have an opportunity to uphold your oath of office and unanimously recommend, out of committee, LD 652 not to pass. Thank you.
Is it Mr. Moore? From Millbridge.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to hit three things that I don't... Most everything I covered, but I'll do the same. Likes, Senator. Judge Offsley, I'm answering right. Got it. Okay. I've lived in Vermont. The state doesn't require a permit to carry. I felt this is safe there, as I do out here walking around anywhere. I've been in downtown Montpelier, and as other people have said, the streets aren't running with blood. I don't think I ever heard a shot after dark that wasn't somebody died on there. It just doesn't happen the way that those opposed to LD 652 have talked about. I'm also a former corrections officer, and I can tell you, criminals don't follow the law. And all the time that I worked there, I used to work with Senator Burness' son. I never met a person who was incarcerated and was concerned with having a permit to carry. They didn't worry about it. It wasn't on the list. They were running around with chains in their pockets, tucked in their pants, and they certainly weren't supposed to have those there. That's just not the way it works. And we've heard about domestic violence victims, sorry. A permit doesn't make them more or less safe. In my opinion, it makes them having to go through the permit process less safe because it takes time. I don't know just how long the gentleman from Sorrento handled that quite nicely. I have a thirteen-year-old daughter, and I can tell you, she knows that a piece of paper isn't going to protect her. She's going to have to protect herself. Seconds count. You dial nine-one-one where I live, Millbridge, it's going to take a while. There was an incident just recently that my wife called her. A girl who got something on Facebook sent to her. Shouldn't have been. Her parents and everybody was quite concerned. Took two hours for somebody to get there. How we went made sure that they were safe and they came to our house. But making people wait, jump through these... It doesn't make them any safer. And with that, I think I'm going to stop because you've covered everything across the country.
Thank you. We all appreciate it. Thank you. Hello, Tipco? Gary Holcomb?
Thank you for the opportunity to address this distinguished committee. Article one of the Maine Constitution spells out a specific declaration of rights. Furthermore, that same Maine Constitution states in section one that there exist natural rights. Article one, section one specifically spells out some of the natural, inherent, and unalienable rights of mankind, and among them are the right to defend life and liberty and to protect property. Article one, section sixteen goes on to enumerate an additional natural and self-evident right, the right to keep in their arms. It's an undeniable fact that there will always exist a small number of persons who will ignore laws safeguarding life, property, and happiness, and it is proper that the innocent be able to defend themselves against the depredations of the lawless. Therefore, I must advocate for passage of this bill. History provides some additional perspective through some little-known ancient writings by a couple of famous people, the identities of which I'll reveal in a minute. The first ancient admonition is the instruction given when a poor person asks someone who is in better financial condition for a loan. And all the poor person has for surety against the loan is his cloak. This admonition states that the creditor was to give the cloak back to the poor man every night because his cloak is the only covering he has for his body. What else will he sleep in? This admonition to give the cloak back to the poor man every night highlights how important the cloak was. It's crucial to the person's well-being. But there is another famous person who gave a very surprising instruction, and that was if you don't have a sword, sell your cloak and buy one. The cloak was central to a person's well-being, but the sword is even more crucial. Who were these famous men, and where were these ancient admonitions found? The first admonition was given by Moses, who was called the Lawgiver. The second admonition was given by Jesus, who was also known as the Prince of Peace. The first admonition is found in Exodus, chapter twenty-two, verses twenty-six and twenty-seven. The second directive is found in Luke twenty-two, verse thirty-six. Just to note, it was against Roman law for common people to own or bear a sword. For Jesus, the Prince of Peace, to give this directive, which violates Roman law, placing God's natural law above the laws of man highlights the importance that God himself puts on the ability of the common, everyday person to defend himself. He who endeavors to remove that right fights against God. Therefore, we must pass this bill, which preserves the God-given natural right to self-defense. Please pass LD 652. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much.
Yeah?
And who is lucky number sixty?
That'd be me.
Oh, Bradley.
Good evening, Senator Rosen, Representative Fowler, members of the Joint Senate Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety. Thank you for your patience. I don't know what do they say, it's best to be first and last, so I guess I'm dead last. My name is Peter Gore. I'm the vice president of advocacy at the Maine State Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to speak neither for nor against LD 652, but to provide you with some comments should you decide to move forward with the bill. We take no public policy... We have no position on public policy merits regarding the elimination concealed weapons permit or concealed weapons permit process or instituting something different in its place. But should this committee and this legislature decide to move forward with this issue, there are some issues that you... Or this bill, there are some issues you may wish to address. In 2010 and 2011, the legislature passed a piece of legislation founded title Twenty-Six MRSA Six Hundred that deals with the ability of an individual, or the objections of an employer, to bring a concealed weapon to the workplace and leave it locked in their car in the parking lot. This is something that we strenuously object to, as we believe is the employer's right to manage their business in the way they think is best. However, a key component to the passage of that bill, the ability of the individual to bring a weapon to the employer's workplace, is the possession of concealed weapons permit. If you look in the bill, that piece of law is as a valid permit to carry a concealed weapon. We would urge you strongly to address this issue if you decide in this discrepancy in the law, if you decide to move forward with this particular piece of legislation. Secondly, what would be the ability of the employer to enforce a no-weapons policy at their workplace, but perhaps not to? Some employers choose to do so and put such a policy in place, and some do not. If there is a no-concealed weapons policy or process in the state, or a quasi some have, some can't, will the employer still be able to say, all right, I know that I have the potential of a handgun in my parking lot, but I can forbid it from coming into my building? Will the employer still be able to do that? We would hope that this committee would enable the employers to continue to be able to make that decision for themselves when it comes to their workplace as a way to manage their workplace in the best way they see fit. As I told this committee four years ago, and actually two years ago, when we... I've lost that position twice, I was. This is not about guns from our perspective. As I have testified thousands of times, literally, in my twenty-year career at the Maine State Chamber of Commerce, it is about the ability of the employer to manage their workplace again and again and again. And that is all we are seeking to clarify here. I thank you for your time, and I'd be glad to try and answer any questions you may have.
Senator, just ask you a question.
I do have a question because it links back to the bill that you had mentioned about bringing concealed weapons onto property of business owners, whether they want it or not. If we were to get rid of the concealed weapons permit, how would you suggest we're going to then deal with the law that passed about bringing guns onto your property?
Senator, I believe what I heard the bill sponsor say is, on one hand, he is advocating the elimination of the concealed weapons permit process, but on the other hand, he's not saying get rid of it completely, that some people still have a CWP and may seek to get one in the future. All we're saying is, if that's the decision you try to go, please clarify in the existing law that if you don't have a concealed weapons permit, you're not entitled to bring your gun to the workplace, as the law currently says. That's all we're saying. We take no position on the merits of whether you should have one and you shouldn't have one. Just make sure that whatever legislation goes forward has clarifier in language so the employer knows what their rights are to do.
Does that call upon that same line? Mr. Gore, if we were to impose upon our businesses that people without concealed weapons permit, explosive weapons, can carry concealed, how long would we be able to keep employees harassed? to keep employees from us, or businesses like McDonald's that have a lot of children involved in their location, there's some big street children, do you think that would give us a better fight?
Senator, again, I want to go back and stress one thing. I'm looking to make sure that whatever happens under this bill doesn't change what the current policy is of the state. So for instance, an employer is currently entitled to say to their employees, you are not permitted to bring a gun into my place of business. I know it's in my parking lot, I don't want it any further than my parking lot. That was the law that the legislature decided to move forward with. All I'm saying in this scenario is, if you're going to do something different with regard to concealed weapons permits, just make sure that employers know that the rules have not changed, that if an employer is entitled to say to their employees now or in the future, you cannot bring a weapon into my place of business.
Thank you. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if an employer could say to their employees, you can't have it in, you know, keep the gun in cars, we do get away from the permitting process, could then that be expanded to say any customers, so that, what's the purpose of eliminating the concealed carry if every business said, oh, no, you can't conceal carry in my parking lot? Because as we're hearing testimony from individuals, they're so fearful for their lives that they can't go into a local store. I mean, what would be the purpose of eliminating that if every business could turn around and say, well, not in my parking lot?
There's a difference between what employers can do, either customers and their employees. And I'm going to try and answer your question the best I can, because I'm not sure I completely understand it, but if I didn't, you can ask me to clarify. What a customer does in an employer's parking lot, they have no control. And, you know, the argument that was made, you know, four years ago has been made here today, which is, people are probably bringing guns when they go to the Rennie's or whatever, it's already happened. The issue is how they manage the people that work for them. The legislature has said, over the objections of many in the business community, it's okay for you to bring a handgun, and if you're an employee with a concealed weapon, to work and leave it locked and concealed in your vehicle, blocking trunk, is what I believe the language actually can talk about earlier. But what, if an employee then brought a gun into the workplace, an employer would be free to say to that person, you violated our law, you violated my workplace rules. And so a couple of things can happen, either I'm going to send you home today, I'm going to send you down the road, or something within that category. In other words, the employer has the right to take an employment action against that individual, whereas they have no control over what happens with their customers that are out in the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone that I've forgotten or still wants to testify?
I didn't sign up, I should. Just start, please. I'm ready to sign up. Have you signed up on the sheet up on the podium? There's a sheet, we can sign up. We could bring this one.
And what is your name?
My name is Thomas, I go up to Denmark, Maine. I wasn't originally going to testify because of this, but I kind of got showed up here, so I guess I had to. Basically, I just want to express as a constituent that I really hope that the committee does pass LD 652 and allow adult in the state, not just from the committee, but obviously with all integration of citizens from the state. I think the bill would be a positive step for basically all legal law-abiding gun owners who already can have a gun. Everybody's, you know, it's a process of paying to apply, to pay again, to do something that many believers already have, the constitutional right, both state and federal. Obviously, I agree with that, but everybody has their opinions. I guess I'll just cut it short, say, I really do hope that everybody at least allows for the vote, and obviously, as well as many people here today would appreciate support of the bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Glad to hear your voice. How about you for the speech?
One last.
Yeah. Well, thank you. That ends the public hearing.
On all the votes?
We did it.
Three hours. Three hours of room.
I've got to keep low.
Senator Rosen?
Okay. Your job, except for looking at face.
Great.
I need a piece of pie. I need, I can't, I can't talk to you. I can't talk to you.
It's a guy's on the other side of the wall.
I am.
Whoa, whoa.
I've signed here a couple of years.
Curtis, I've never been so quiet in my life during my life.
Well, the start of our very strong, they would say for that.